I'm not going to do more on it, so if people want.
Okay, I'd like to bring the April eighth, two thousand twenty five Planning Board meeting to order. Karen, if you could roll call, please.
Louie Bogan?
Here.
Jim Callahan?
Here.
Kevin Nuderven?
Here.
Dave Edmond?
Yeah.
Rob Klein?
Here.
Carolyn Turner?
Here.
Chair Bob Dari?
Here. Before the meeting begins, please silence your cell phones and note that this meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda is a public hearing zoning text amendment, outdoor dining. And you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning board. For the record, Consular Joe DeMurr is from Ward four. I filed this zoning amendment to our zoning ordinances to get more of a streamlined approach for outdoor dining. I know that during COVID, we saw a lot more out dining than we ever expected to accommodate for the changing needs in society. And I think we're seeing an evolving industry with the fast food industry where we see in a lot more generalized locations as opposed to off kind of the beaten path or in tight areas like, you know, Four Corners and vice versa. So I think, you know, having a way where we can also encourage economic growth at these locations as well will put a step forward for Woburn. And we also, you know, I know some of my colleagues would agree with me on the city council is taking it piecemeal and looking at different overlay districts where we would allow it or different areas around town, kind of created an inequity, I think, where we see some of the restaurants in downtown being granted the ability to do that by the mayor's office, but then we also see some areas where it might work, but currently under our zoning ordinances, it wouldn't be allowable. So if anything, I just wanted to start the conversation amongst the planning board and the city council. I'm very anxious to hear some of your views on the on the issue, and I'm open all ears for any suggestions you may have to make this a better ordinance so that we move Woburn forward economically, but then we also have some 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 great dining opportunities around town. Thank you.
Any comments? David.
So my son used to live in a place called West Chester, Pennsylvania. They perfected this process. The key was to keep the sidewalk traffic moving even though they were using paths at the sidewalk for dining. And the first time I saw it, I said, how does this work? And I watched and it, you know, it was very successful and it increased the number of diners that were coming to these restaurants because people liked to dine outside. So I I think it's, I think it has legs.
You're welcome. Jim?
I like the concept. I think it may need a little bit more work, particularly downtown. Traffic patterns, like Dave said about the pedestrian traffic. Then, you know, in areas like downtown, if you do open it up to outdoor dining, who maintains the streets and the sidewalks from litter and garbage? I think there's just a couple of things you might want to touch upon.
Sure.
I think, you know, Woburn Mall, which is very dense area, but definitely a good area for outdoor dining and some other places in the city. But I think you have to be considerate of some of those items in the overall picture, but definitely the trend that everyone cares for.
Sir? Anyone else? It's Carolyn.
Yes, I guess my concern or question would be any limitation on the operating hours for the outdoor dining. Would it be the same? Would it be when the kitchen closes or it seems to be what you're proposing is for when the establishment closes?
Yep, yeah, and I, we left that, you know, considerably vague to allow for room for maneuvering with the language. I didn't want to be so narrow that, you know, some some areas wouldn't be included under that, but I think considering any additional changes to the hours of operation, definitely to limit it, especially entities that are close to residential areas, of course.
Anything else?
I wouldn't mind talking about downtown, especially in regard to litter. The mayor has been committed since taking office to making sure the downtown area is cleaned up and policed. You know, really trying to incorporate it on a daily basis. If you do notice the barrels that are down there, we are trying to incorporate more of a appealing, visually appealing trash barrel. Some of them do have covers on them, others are just fifty five gallon drums. Last year during the summertime mostly, we ran into a lot of problems. People were actually using them to dump their storefront trash in our dumpsters. So, you know, it was pretty hard for the DPW crew that's in charge of emptying those barrels to keep pace with the amount of trash that was going in them. So we're really trying to monitor that particular situation better. And as far as littering is concerned, it's very concerning to me, and I've written about it on Facebook a number of times over the last year. It just seems like, for whatever reason, that this newest generation of people didn't grow up, obviously, in the sixties and seventies when we really started taking notice of how much litter there was and we stopped littering. And things looked like they were cleaned up for quite a while, but just over the last few years, you just notice so much litter when you go for walks and especially downtown. I walk downtown every morning, you know, really to start my day and, you know, just this year again, recently, I pick up a lot of litter myself as I'm walking through town. But we're going to pick up the pace as a city, working with the DPW and the property owners down there. We have a flyer that we'll be putting out and talking to the storefront owners. You know, a lot of the litter pickup responsibility should be part of the daily business operations for storefronts in downtown Woburn. And we're trying very much to encourage that as part of our, you know, cleanup and keep clean the downtown area. So if there is any vendors down there, restaurants that do propose outside dining, again, they're going to have to make sure that the pedestrian crosswalks are more pedestrian, sidewalks are passable relative to what they're planning to have for seating. We do see with the Brickyard how successful outdoor dining is. They've had tremendous business in their downtown setup on Citizens Park or Jack Marlowe Park over the last few years. This year is part of the lease agreement that we haven't signed into effect yet, but the proprietor for the grill, they've agreed to police that entire area, keep the waterfall, the ponds of the waterfall in the parking area in the immediate vicinity of the stairway, including the stairway, and in front of their property clean. And they're going to do that on a daily basis, and they've also agreed to empty the the city's trash barrels on their property or within the park as part of their lease agreement in lieu of not going up on their lease for this year. They're going to take the responsibility of keeping the area clean. That'll help lessen the load of the DPW staff. I do want to say to you, we have a parklet that will be installed pretty soon on Church. Now, there's a debate whether it's Church Street or Church Avenue. I was corrected, I was calling it Church Street, but I guess it is Church Avenue. But we're planning to install a parklet, and if anybody, does everybody know what that is? It's an outdoor dining facility. It's it's like a patio, but it's going to be protected from vehicles. It's within the roadway. It's thirty two feet in length by almost six feet in width, so it doesn't stick out from the curbing any more than a car would parked alongside the road. And we've been working with the mayor on this and DPW and police and fire just to make sure they're they're satisfied with the location as far as safety concerns are involved. And that's going to be Woburn's first foray into providing outdoor dining within a public right of way. As you know, most communities or many communities do have these outdoor dining facilities. And, you know, here we have an opportunity to try it out on a pilot basis and see how well it's received. And then, you know, if that pilot program that's going to be started this year, if it does take off, we'll probably invest in additional parklets as we go forward. That's, in a way, that's part of what we're talking about tonight, offering people in the downtown area that frequent the restaurants to have an opportunity to have some public outside dining.
I have a question for you, Joe. So just briefly reading this, this this does not allow everybody to have outdoor dining.
It doesn't.
What this does, and these are questions, even though there's no question mark at the end of them. This gives everybody the opportunity to apply for outdoor dining.
Correct.
Basically. Okay. When somebody gets outdoor dining, do they reapply for that outdoor dining every year?
Currently, under the provisions in this proposed ordinance, I do not know if that's written in the existing ordinance. I know for the downtown area in the past, they've just been granted permission by the mayor's office, I believe. That's what was the was the previous way of going about it. There was no permit process. It might have had to go before the license commission if there was alcohol to be served on public property. But as far as I know, it was if a restaurant wanted to use a little frontage out in front of Woburn Center, they were just given the green light.
And as long as it was downtown?
Correct.
They were fine.
Correct.
But if they, you know, up north Woburn, they couldn't do it. What, John, do you know the, so there's nothing, they just automatically do it?
Well, it's really a matter of making sure that they don't go overboard where it's impeding the travel of pedestrians on the sidewalks. And, you know, a lot of the locations downtown offer areas of, you know, small round tables seating for two. You know, there aren't a lot of places in downtown that would offer, you know, full dining facilities, say a table seating six or eight people. It's just, it's not, the sidewalks aren't wide enough to offer that. A lot of communities, that is offered because they do have big white sidewalks, but, you know, Woburn's not fortunate to have many of those type of locations. One of those type of locations is on Church Avenue, that particular sidewalk that runs alongside the corner restaurant. That, we measured that yesterday, I think it's almost ten feet in width, so there's plenty of width there for outside dining capacity. But most of the sidewalks in Main Street are fairly narrow. You know, in front of Marcos, there's a bump out there. I'm just giving this for example, that has width enough to handle a couple of small tables with seating for, I think it's four he usually has there. But, you know, it's very limited.
So what would this allow people to do? Go to the mayor and ask for permission or?
No, they would have to, they would have to come, so the language states, excuse me, that an amendment would need to be filed to the site plan of record. So if it's an existing restaurant prior to providing any outdoor dining.
This is citywide, Mr. Chairman, Joe, it's not downtown.
Right, it's not limited to the downtown area.
Correct.
So we would, you know, I could give you an example of what what I could see is, you know, the ninety nine. You know, a lot of ninety nines across the Commonwealth during COVID had tents outside their facility where they would take up their own parking, and they had, you know, like picnic tables for outdoor use to keep social distancing, social distancing going on. So I could see that being something that's utilized maybe at the west side. This was much less of a focus of downtown because there was a lot of leeway already allowed to that. I think there was other parts of our city that had restaurants that would have liked to have been granted similar accommodations for outdoor seating that it wasn't available to them.
And how would they get this again?
Right, it would go through, so in section, so the fourth bullet point, any existing restaurant, fast food that is not currently providing outdoor seating shall be required to obtain approval pursuant to eleven point twelve of an amendment to its site plan of record from the city council. They'd have to come for a site plan amendment for the city council.
Okay. But that doesn't include the ones in the center of town?
No. Well, I mean, it would.
Yeah, because doesn't this say now that?
Those, those, those.
Everybody would.
Those locations that would fall under section eleven point twelve. So I think the downtown district is given different leeway under our current.
Okay.
Our current zoning. And I'm not, you know, I mean, we could also look at it whether that was just something that was a common practice that had started and wasn't necessarily codified in our zoning.
Okay. Wouldn't, I just, wouldn't you like to have more control over it, you know?
Yeah, you know, I was just getting the ball rolling.
The whole city?
Yeah, I was, I mean, I was just getting the ball rolling to get the discussion going because I know that, you know, we continue to, there have been multiple conversations about it. I know we had the rooftop dining discussion. We then had, you know, an outdoor dining when I just came onto the city council that kind of went nowhere and kind of failed. So I'd rather, you know, grab the bull by the horns on this and have a conversation that's a lively discussion where we can get this right. I'm not expecting anybody to rub a stamp, something that, you know, we we put together and and I know, you know, hearing from everyone, including, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing from Commissioner Quinn to see, you know, some of the building, building code aspects of this as well and tightening up our language. I know, you know, some concerns have been raised to me that the first sentence of the outdoor dining section might be a little bit vague in terms of where it could, where it could be done in terms of adjacent outside areas. So there's a, there's a lot of work that can be done here. I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and work on it to make sure that we get this right because I think we have an opportunity to, you know, reinvigorate our downtown. I know with a lot of the, you know, debate that's going to be coming before us with community meetings on the redesign of the downtown area, we have, we'll have an opportunity to get this right ahead of time so that when those changes are made, we can think about, you know, what we're going to be allowing downtown, what we're going to be allowing across the city, and just making it equitable for all the business owners across the, across the city because I think it's only fair.
I agree.
Lou DeBamro with City Council for Ward six. I just want to add that if this did come in front of the city council, it would be on an application basis, and we would be able to condition it per applicant. So each individual restaurateur that would come to us, we would have to have a site plan review. We would be in touch with Commissioner Quinn, other department heads, and then we would take their feedback, condition it accordingly to the specific restaurant in that specific location so that, you know, hours of operation, the area, who cleans, who takes care of a barrel, who does this, who does that, we can condition that. If they should run awry and it starts coming to our attention, we can always bring them back in front of the city council and revoke that applicant, the the permit for the outside dining. So there are controls that would be put in place that we could take just like a regular special permit. Thank you. I just want to add.
David.
So I just want, I remember during COVID, there were situations, not in Woburn, where people morphed their dining area into the street. So it was like they took over a parking, it was allowed, obviously. We're not talking about.
That's not our intent with the ordinance change. Now, you know, in terms of a public way, that's not our intent. You know, if there's a large shopping center that is going to allow that business to maybe use a few parking spaces within that, within that lot plan to make a patio, I mean, that that is another option, but we can also look at restrictive language to make sure that, you know, it doesn't get overdone.
Right, I mean, some of the places you talked about, yeah, they have sidewalks that are actually inside of their areas. But I'd be concerned about, like I said, I remember during COVID where they sort of built out onto the parking spot in front of.
Yeah, I mean, Winchester was very good at it when they had the, but it was a little bit unseemly when they had the giant, you know, I think they were like plastic jersey barriers that were bright orange with flower boxes hanging on them to dress them up. I don't know that that would fly in downtown Woburn, but, you know, that's just, there's multiple options out there, and I think if we just, you know, everybody would bring their, bring their best foot forward and ideas on this, I think we can get something done that everybody can be proud of, so.
And again, I'd just like to add that a department head would be involved in this, other department heads. So if they found that it was an unsafe area, they didn't think there was enough room, there wasn't enough, you know, of a path, a safe path on the sidewalk, then it would be next, we would deny it due to specific reasons that the department head would tell us this is a no go due to space confinement, so on and so forth, safety, traffic, whatever.
Your primary concern would be safety.
Oh, absolutely, especially in a tighter area like Woburn. Especially in a tighter area like Woburn Center as opposed to, well, leave that up in North Woburn. I mean, it would have to be a specific area. I mean, I don't think, you know, Lisa's Pizza up in North Woburn, again, same, same scenario as, you know, the center. I mean, if they wanted outdoor dining, yeah, El Fresco with a little tin table and two little steel chairs, that's one thing, but if you wanted to have, you know, four sets of tables out front, absolutely not.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're not, we're not looking, I know, primary, safety is primary, but I know my colleagues and I are also not looking to deplete the downtown of parking to expand outdoor seating.
Yes.
I think that would be something we've heard loud and clear already.
Ossetif?
I'm set. Good.
Rob? Um, just clarity on the site plan review, is that, what's the process for, for that? That's not a public hearing?
So right now, yeah, it would be, uh, for the site plan review, any type of amendment to the site plan that was approved by the city council would have to come back before us. I know, you know, and, and examples that we've had before are restaurants that may or may not have had patio space available to them under their current site plan, but the ordinance wouldn't allow them in that certain area to utilize it as an outdoor seating area. So it, and we, we do have some restaurants in town that have an adjacent outdoor area that would be perfect for patio, they won't have to do much, they might even, it might even be safe already, that cannot utilize that space for outdoor seating because we don't have a generalized ordinance to that effect.
Right, okay, yeah, so, no, I, I think it's a great idea and I love, I think it's great for the city, great for the restaurants. One thing maybe to consider for you, for the sake of you guys is, is if there's any type of, it's tough to make, but generalization, you can make as far as, for lack of a better term, by right, so you're not flooded with, you know, you guys get flooded enough at public hearings. So if there's any, you know, general parameters we can make where this just, these dimensions, this curfew, whatever, makes sense, these few can, can do it and everyone else come to it.
And I think, I think one of the, one of the parameters that'll probably, um, may take care of that is the restaurant has to be, you know, attached to the building that the restaurant is, is located in, uh, as well as owned by who, whether, you know, landlord or whoever, whoever owns that building and that restaurant's in, they must own that property adjacent. It can't be, you know, the guy next door's property, no, it has to be theirs.
Right.
Yeah, we also, we also don't want to see, you know, I'll give you an example, like up in, off of Washington Street, like Grill, Grill 110, or 110 Grill. I don't want to see people going across a parking lot to get to an open space to serve folks. It's just, that's not, that's not the intent.
Or across the street.
Yeah.
You know, they're sitting in Salem Five's parking lot.
Well, definitely not on Washington Street.
Not on Washington Street.
Couldn't be any worse. Any other questions? Claudia?
So, um, I think it's a great idea. I ha, I just wanted to hone in on something that you guys said about, well, we're not talking about, you know, a little tin table and a couple of chairs. And I then looked at your definitions, right? Because the last thing you want to do is folks like, you know, a little pizza shop that has a one table and two chairs, all of a sudden someone saying, oh, well, you need a special permit for that. Because the way that you've defined what outdoor dining is, is quote, "the same eating and drinking activities that occur within that establishment." So theoretically, that could include a little tin table and two chairs, depending on how you define same, right? So you wouldn't inadvertently want to put all those people who have like that little thing, making, making that illegal under the new ordinance, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so that would be just.
Providing it safe, though. I mean, if they just put it out there willy-nilly because it looked nice, but then all of a sudden, you know, the commissioner or somebody goes by and goes, I can't pass the sidewalk because there's these tables. And then it goes through the process, did they pull a permit for that? No, then you got to remove it. It's an obstruction on the sidewalk.
So it's that sort of, you know, where's the line between?
Safety.
You know, yeah, the, the one table and the chairs.
It's a safety with the measurement of the. It's understandable to consider that pretty vague as well.
Yeah.
Because it, everybody has a different idea of what safety truly is in terms of.
And, you know, that may not be.
Pedestrian safety.
That may not be a bad thing, right?
Oh, it could be a good thing, yeah.
The way that you've put the ordinance forward is it's up to you guys, right? The elected officials who are, that's your job, right, to make sure that everything in the city is, is sort of going the way the community wants it. So maybe vague isn't a bad thing, but I'm just, you know, I was just saying, you know, accepting out, you know, a little tin table and two chairs from this may not be possible after you put the ordinance together, depending.
Right.
Right.
Definitely worthy consideration in terms of.
Definitions are always the problem.
We don't want to tie our hands, but we also don't want to let an aircraft carrier drive right through it either.
Yeah, yeah, definitions are always like the devil is in them, you know, just to, to think about that. I am all set.
David?
So we would make sure that the ADA compliance was there because that, you know, as a person who's a little bit limited in mobility, that's not really my issue, it's the wheelchairs. And there's a lot of motorized wheelchairs now that are a little bit wider than those that we used. We'd want to make sure that those people had 100% at all times clearance.
Most definitely. And, you know, downtown restaurants are kept to that same standard when, if they had a, an outside sign or, or put something out there temporarily or had, you know, plantings or anything like that, they would still have to adhere to the sidewalk, ADA compliance through the building commission.
And, and I believe with the public, if, if there was an ADA issue, I'm sure we would hear about it. They would say, we can't get this wheelchair down the sidewalk because it's impeding because of this tin table and these two chairs, and then actions taken and say, you can't have this here, providing they went through, I mean, prior to that, we'd have to go down there, measure it out, make sure there's enough, so what do you need? We need four feet for this and four feet for that. If you don't have it, then you don't have it, you don't get it. And if they snuck it in there, then we have to go down there and say, well, you're going to have to remove it because it's an obstruction on the sidewalk.
Any other board members?
I have one more.
Yes, Claudia?
Um, this is just my ignorance because I don't know what the permitting process is for restaurants, but does every restaurant in the city have a special permit that they could modify in this way?
No, there are some that do have it and it wouldn't apply to those. So in the section four, it would be the requirement shall not apply to any fast food restaurant that has been issued a special permit decision with an approved site plan, uh, showing outdoor seating already. Um, but, you know, with the site plan review piece separate from the special permit, that would just be if, you know, under, under the, excuse me, under our current, uh, rules, if they have to come to the city council for site, site plan reviewed because it's a by right use, we would have to approve that site plan amendment that would have included the outdoor dining space as part of the overall site plan.
Okay. So that, again, you know, this is just from ignorance of the way the zoning treats restaurants, that if you have a restaurant in the city of Woburn and you had a by right ability to open a restaurant and you don't have a special permit, this would still apply to you?
Correct.
Understood. Okay, thanks for the explanation.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it. I'm all set.
Anyone else?
Just one last question. What do you define fast food as? Because most of the restaurants, well, half the restaurants in Woburn are dine-in places. And then we have our usual pizza places.
Yeah, so the, the restaurant fast, so there's restaurant full service, restaurant fast food. Restaurant fast food has anything to do where you could go in and in a rather quick turnaround, leave with takeout and unusable, not reusable containers. Um, it also, you know, anything from a walk-up window or an express line or a drive-through would all fall under, uh, fast food.
As well as the common Vic license that they also have.
Correct. Yeah, that kind of defines it.
That defines it to the T.
So the bakeries could do this?
Providing they have their no space.
Because they do serve.
I didn't think about the bakeries.
Oh, I always think about.
Because, you know, we could think about bakeries, but then you could think about, you know, Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks, do they fall under the same thing or are they under restaurant fast food?
It's restaurant fast food.
Yes, restaurant fast food, yeah.
We have a bakery in Woburn Center.
Sure, sure. I mean, that would, that would definitely be something that we would consider, creating a further definition to not exclude a, a, a business like that.
Which some of them now are making sandwiches and they kind of.
Sure, yeah.
Pizzas and so on and so forth and breakfast sandwiches. So I guess you could say they're fast food.
To an extent.
To an extent, yeah.
I think they're all serving.
Yeah, they're all.
Whether it's fast food or not is.
I think sometimes too, there's a, there's a connotation that when people, when things are termed fast food, you're thinking McDonald's, you're thinking Burger King. There's a lot of other restaurants that fall under that, uh, definition.
I don't think there's such a thing anymore. It's like, it's supposed to be fast food, I've been in the line for 10 minutes. Okay, um, if everybody's all set on the board, uh, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come up and speak in favor or opposed, please do so.
Good evening. For the record, Joseph Tabby, Ruben Rudman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive, on behalf of Madison Woburn LLC that owns, uh, Woburn Landing. And, um, we'd like to thank the councilors, Demurris, Toro, and Demuro for filing this, um, zoning ordinance. Because in 2022 and before, outdoor dining was allowed at fast food restaurants without any, any type of special permit, other than the special permit that the fast food restaurant needed. Back in, um, November of 2021, the, uh, definition of outdoor dining was added to the zoning ordinance. And, um, for some reason, there was a sentence added that said, "Outdoor dining, you shall not be permitted at a restaurant, fast food establishment." So, um, you take Woburn Landing, for example, um, that has Chick-fil-A that was, um, approved before 2021, they have outdoor dining. Um, 110 Grill, although it's a full-service restaurant, they have outdoor dining. And, um, to answer, um, some of the questions that, that were raised, um, we, we, I represented on behalf of Madison Woburn, two fast food restaurants at Woburn Landing in the last few years, one of them being, uh, Press Cafe, I don't know if you're familiar, there's a Press Cafe in Burlington. They got approved to go on the, um, the old Red Robin site. And then Starbucks, um, in the empty space next to, um, 110 Grill. In both of those instances, there was outdoor dining shown on the site plan that was approved by the city council. However, um, because of what is stated in the zoning ordinance, there were, were conditions, um, added to the, um, the special permit decisions. And I'll just read one of them. So for example, on Press Cafe, it says, "The outdoor seating shown on the site plan cannot be used until such time the petitioner obtains the required approvals to allow for the outdoor seating," meaning the adoption of the zoning ordinance. And then to David's, um, concerns about, um, public safety, um, excuse me, there were conditions added to both that required, um, a wall or bollards to be placed along the outside future outdoor seating to protect patrons. In, in addition, um, Tom Quinn, um, reviewed plans to ensure that there's accessibility to the outdoor seating and that there is going to be sufficient, um, you know, bathrooms on site to accommodate the number of people that could be seated at the, at the outdoor dining. So the way I, I read this, this, this ordinance is that, um, both of the uses at Woburn Landing would, would fall under the exemption in number four, which says, "This requirement shall not apply to any fast food establishment that has been issued a special permit decision with an improved site plan showing outdoor seating." So we're hoping that this ordinance gets adopted so that that outdoor seating, you know, can be used. And before it can be used, there'll be further inspections by the building commissioner to make sure all safety features are in there, that there's enough, uh, plumbing fixtures on site to accommodate the number of people and that there is accessibility. And then, you know, my, my view of looking at this ordinance is that any other fast food restaurant that doesn't have outdoor seating but has a site plan that showed their restaurant and parking would have to come before the city council under section 11.12, where a determination is made that the request is either a minor or a modi, or a major modification. If it's major, it requires a new public hearing. If it's minor, they can approve the, um, the new site plan. Um, the only other comment I, I wanted to make, which is, which is the suggestion, is that, um, it seems in other communities, like for example Winchester, um, I have a client that has a restaurant, is that the outdoor seating is, um, taken care of under the town or municipal code because you're dealing with public walkways, you're dealing with streets, you're dealing with parking spaces, and that's a separate process that goes to the select board. And, um, my understanding is that if you want to have outdoor seating and take up four parking spaces, then you have to pay X amount of money for a parking spot. And then the select board, after getting input from DPW, building and other departments then would vote to allow for outdoor seating in the downtown area. I think this, this ordinance would, would basically cover, um, every other area of the city. I'm not aware of any fast food restaurants in downtown that would have a site plan approved, um, that they could go in and, and amend it. So I think it's a, this is a good step, um, forward in, in providing for the outdoor dining. I know in a particular, um, location of Woburn Landing, um, it's going to be very important to Press Cafe as outdoor dining is part of their business operation and, um, you know, we'd like to see this move forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, anything else from the board, or any other people from the public? Okay, no one? Um, John?
Yes.
I, I, I get the impression that we're not really going anywhere with this just now because of all the stuff we talked about, but how do you feel about this?
Um, well, what I'm offering in the, in the report tonight and the recommendation is that, um, there may be some tweaking of the language to date, um, but do we want to be doing the tweaking or do we want to leave that in the hands of the city council? Um, there's probably going to be a lot more discussion in the city council, you know, coming up with the final language of this. But, um, what I recommend for this evening for the board's consideration is to, um, forward it with a favorable recommendation, at, at least on the idea that's being presented and that, yeah, any amendment language can be worked on by the council, um, you know, to ref, further refine the exact definition of fast food restaurant, um, if that's an outstanding issue still. And, um, you know, where in particular, if we're going to pick and choose zoning districts or locations in the community of which a special permit would apply or by right. So, um, I'm just saying, we, we could send this along and they can finalize it in any manner they find, uh, fit after receiving more input.
So I did, do think we gave them some ideas of which I saw.
Why don't I make a motion to close the public hearing? And then we'll start there and see what the board's pleasure is.
Motion by Claudia to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Carolyn. All those in favor? Seven zero carries. As I said, I think we gave Alderman Demurris some ideas and he was writing stuff down, whether he was just doing that to appease us or whether he was actually writing stuff down, I'll, I'll never know.
There you go.
So I would make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the city council. The way that I see this is that the city councilors are looking to make positive changes in the city and that the ordinance is designed essentially to make the city council, the folks that are making the decisions on a case-by-case basis, as well as to make the ordinance reflect the amount of vagueness that they find appropriate to make this work. So I, I think if, I'm comfortable having all the ideas out and it's, it's kind of up to them, so I'd make that as a motion, favorable recommendation.
A motion by Claudia to send a favorable recommend, forward a favorable recommendation to the city council. Do I have a second? Second by Dave. All those in favor? Seven zero carries. Thank you. Seven zero carries. Thank you. All right, second item up, subdivision, Highview Estates, definitive subdivision. We had an attachment here which had a couple of things in it that Director Cashell will address with us.
Yes. So the developer and his legal representative, I gather, are here this evening to present an initial proposal that proposes to amend what the court decision was rendered. The court decision was rendered, the planning board's aware of that, and they'd like to initiate the discussions on a possible amending of the court decision that would lessen the development impact of that particular hillside, shortening the roadway, narrowing the roadway, reducing the amount of stone that would come out of the hillside by up to 45%. So they'd like to present that proposal this evening to start discussions at least.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Director, Mr. Chair, Madam Planner, Planning Board members. So yes, and Director Cashell, I'd like to modify a little bit of what you said, which is we reached a settlement with Eversource with regard to the processes for any blasting work with the existing plan. And Mr. Santulo and Senko are proposing to reduce the size of the development, reduce the size of the homes, reduce the size of the area that will be developed, which would allow for much more open space. And I think most importantly is reducing the road access so that the road is not going to cross through the Eversource easement. And so Senko has presented this initial, you know, basic plan and would like the opportunity to present the board with a more thorough, well-thought-out plan, you know, with the acknowledgement that they're covered under the Permit Extension Act. And, you know, the business climate hasn't necessarily become better since we last saw you last year. So, you know, I think Mr. Santulo can speak a little bit more to, you know, the timing of when he thinks he can present that plan to the board and when he could expect to begin breaking ground.
Right. Chairman, members of the board, Michael Santulo, Senko Builders. Obviously, we've been talking about the subdivision for a long time. And, you know, a lot of it up until 2016 didn't really have anything to do with me. You know, since Eversource put the cease and desist order and we've been this whole process since then. The way I see it and the way I look at the project is it's 10 homes, okay? And it's over 7.8 acres, I believe, is what I wrote, right? 7.8 acres of land. And, you know, the lots are enormous, the road length is long. And just a lot of, to me, when I look at it as a development, it's a lot of unnecessary development for 10 homes. And I think there's an opportunity to do less of everything, including less homes and less infrastructure and less blasting and less, just less. And something that makes a lot more sense that would still be a benefit to everyone. You know, the neighbors, you know, far less impact on the area and still provide something nice, you know, some needed housing. Good tax revenue for the city and leave a bunch of land, almost 5-point-something acres, just to leave woods and open space the way it is, you know? And to me, I just think in some situations, less is more, and I think that this is one of those situations. And I understand opening that can of worms is, you know, open it all back up. But I just think there's a lot of benefit to it, you know? At the end of the day, I want to do something, you know, I do a lot of development. And I want to do, you know, in all the developments I do, you know, I have my hands in them from day one. And it's almost like I want to treat this like that again and want to do something that makes sense and works right and looks right. You know, the plan goes back to 2002, I think, is the original plan. So I'm sure a lot of it-
It's got to be older than that.
Yeah. So I know, you know, you've got a lot of-
It's got to be older than that.
I mean, you know, I know that, I mean, I don't even know. I'd have to look at the stormwater cals and all that. I'm sure all of it isn't right. So, you know, I think we have an opportunity to make something right, and that's what I'd like to do.
Okay. Dave, you first.
So these would be 12,000 square foot lots with 100 foot of frontage?
Well, right now, what I propose, you know, so this plan that, I'm not sure if you guys saw that I gave Cashell, is more of a cluster. It's nine versus 10. This was something that I kind of proposed in 2016 when I got the cease and desist order, like an avenue that I wanted to pursue. And of course, we're under litigation. There was really no need to go much further at that point. So, you know, obviously, I prefer to do something like that. The lots are massive. I mean, I really haven't put it to a by right situation. I guess what I would do is I would engage engineers again and design a road and kind of put together a couple of concepts and see what it is by right versus maybe something a little different, you know?
I think, you know, just a little more directly to answer your question. I mean, I think with the nine units, just as, you know, as we have the proposed plan now, it would, you know, there would probably be a variance required with regard to frontage and lot size. But it would be a cluster development so as, you know, to allow for much more open space and much less impact on the land, much less blasting, impact on the neighbors, et cetera.
So I noticed you had something about you won't need a water pumping station or-
Yeah, so the original plan called for a water pump station because of those four lots that were after the power line easement at the top of the hill, which-
You mean the furthest ones?
The furthest ones, yeah. You know, because there were pressure issues.
Yeah, I mean, because when I said one fewer unit, what is the differentiation? Then I looked at the map and said, oh, it's not-
Correct.
Going up there.
Yeah, correct. So, you know, maybe much shorter run, you know, pressure, you know, the high-pressure line, current line in the street would be fine.
So would these five acres that are left over be deeded how? What would-
Yeah, well, I preferably like to deed it to the city, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
You all set?
I'm good.
Joe?
The question to start with is, with the proposed drawing that you have in front of us, is this going to be considered a major modification to an existing development plan that's been approved? Or is it going to be a new application? And there's set of constraints that go with each.
I just, I mean, that's a good question. I don't really, I mean-
Well, I think before we can go anywhere, you as the applicants have to make that decision and present it as such. I think the concept is very good. I think it's what the city residents want. I think everyone wants to get this thing moving. But I think they'll be starting from scratch and reinventing the wheel with a lot of new folks that have moved into the West Side. Blasting. Let's just talk utilities. You keep the same utility plan going right up to the cul-de-sac, same water, roadway, and just put the bulb there right before the easement? Is that pretty much what you're thinking about?
Yeah, pretty much. And like I said, I think drainage would have to be redesigned, you know? I mean, it would have to be looked at again, I believe, you know?
It's certainly going to be reduced for the roadway.
Yep, that would be reduced for the roadway. I mean-
There's a lot of positives. I'm just trying to flush out the questions before you go too far down one direction and maybe cause yourself harm. Make sure that everyone on the board is also looking at it from both sides, both yours and ours, sorry, to accomplish something that I think the majority of these members have been around it, want to have it behind us.
Right. I guess what was I, I kind of want it to be presented. I was hoping maybe with Governor Healey's State Extension Act, I would like to get in it in this two years. Because I kind of would like to present it as of, you know, this is what it was and this is what it is and this is what it will be. Because I think, you know, I want to portray it in that light, because obviously, it's all going to be positive. I don't know. I don't know. I've never done this before. I don't know if there's a way to redevelop or come up with a redevelopment while you have a current approval or-
Well, I think we're all going to look around the room. You have representation. We have bookends here on each side. Then we'll look for our lawyer friends to give us some guidance, I think. But as far as going major modification or new application, and with your tenure here, you guys on that side certainly can weigh in better than most of us. Go to any other member.
Claudia?
So this subdivision, as it finally was approved by us, is still a really bad idea. Everybody, I think, understands that, but we had to approve it because of, you know, court cases and things of this nature. And the fact that, you know, you're coming in and saying, you know, there might be a better way to do this, I am 100% on board with you and I am hoping that we can work this out so that this thing that we had to approve doesn't ever have to get built. I think that you probably have the choice, and council can certainly, you know, weigh in on this. You have the choice of keeping what you have and then either seeing whether you can modify it or putting in a new proposal. I don't believe that that negates the thing that you have approved, right? I mean, you've got something approved, you can build it if you want to within the timeframes. But if you have a better idea that you'd like to substitute, I don't, I'm not really hung up on the modification or new proposal because what I think you're trying to do makes a lot of sense. And the fact that you're trying to do it after the history this thing has had, you know, my respect, okay? It's not like I would want to see this planning board and you engage in some sort of one-upmanship or struggle over this, because you can just build this thing if you want to, which is a terribly bad idea. But hey, that's how it ended up. So however we slice it, whether it's a new proposal, whether it's a major modification, whether it's a minor modification, the hope would be that we can work something out so that the thing that's built makes a heck of a lot more sense than the thing that we ended up having to approve, if that makes sense to you. So I'm not, actually, you know, maybe this disappoints the folks that think lawyers are, you know, technicians all the time, but I don't really see it that way. I see like, how can we make this make sense? And if, you know, my fellow board members see it the same way, then we'll figure it out, right? Under the procedures. If folks don't see it that way, then I can see how this could be a risk to you and potentially a risk to us too, right? But, I mean, that's how I'm, that's how it's landing on me, and hopefully, that's your intention.
It is, yeah.
I mean, I certainly see it more as a modification rather than a completely new-
Now that I'm thinking about it.
Proposal, because it's, you know, it's simply looking at the project as approved and then, you know, looking at the problems with it and the challenges with it, which are, you know, practical and political. And then trying to address those challenges and build something that makes more sense for the community, the neighbors, you know, slightly more affordable units, et cetera. And so I think, you know, that's our view.
Okay. I mean, you know, that makes sense. I mean, the bottom line is, whatever you choose, I don't have in my mind exactly, you know, like the notice requirements and the things of this nature between a major or minor modification. But, I mean, you know, the neighbors will get notice, right, John? They'll, you know, whatever they file that would modify this in any way, it would be, you know, the notice would go out and it would be a similar process to what we did before, only maybe a little bit more truncated because it's a modification. I'm all set.
As you just voiced, it's obviously a much better plan in that, you know, look at how much less disturbance of the environment that's going to happen up there, for one thing.
And the grade of the road.
Yeah.
Not dimensioned.
I've been up there recently. I just have a couple of technical questions. But looking at the amount of removal of ledge that's up there right now, are you really close, I can't remember how close it is to the easement right away? Have you cleared?
No. What I did, what I did before we stopped?
Yeah.
No, I'm not that close.
Okay. So how much further do you have to go to get to the edge of the easement from what exists today?
I mean, I mean, 300, about 300 feet, you know, something like that.
300 feet. So this grade going up, the grade of the roadway, the finished grade, as you're envisioning, what will that end up being?
Well, I mean, I guess you can make, you could try to meet the eight, which is more ledge removal. I think we have it approved at 10, you know?
10.
At 10%.
So that would be, you know, waiver on this board's part with this new plan. And I would suggest that we want to handle this proposal in the most public manner. So, you know, notice to a butters. There are so many butters that are so concerned with this that, you know, we don't want to be caught up in, you know, looking like we're doing something behind the scenes. You know, it's just, let's be all open up. It's a much better proposal than what you have approved, you know? I don't even know if at all feasible, that project that was approved is feasible for anyone to endeavor. It's just so much ledge and it's-
Maybe me, because I own it outright. But, you know, it's, you know, but, you know, it's a tough one.
It's a nightmare.
It's just unnecessary. It's an unnecessarily amount of land for 10 houses.
Yeah. So anyway, how big are these lots that you're proposing?
Well, in this one proposal here, I mean, they're close. They're between 10 and 11,000. You know, they're not 12.
That's not miniaturizing.
No, they're not. And the frontages are between, you know, 83 to 100.
Yeah. And you're going to, each house that's proposed will be built within the required setbacks of any lot?
Correct. Yep. That dotted line on that plan is what is the setbacks, yeah.
I mean, I just, you know, you'll get this question from somebody eventually. Is there any way of actually, you know, feasibly moving forward with this, you know, reducing a couple of these house lots, or does that make the project unfeasible, you know?
No, honestly, this is something I did in 2016 with Eddie Farrell, my land surveyor, when this whole litigation with Eversource went on. I mean, I haven't given this to my actual engineer.
I mean, I think tonight, you know, and really, I've been here doing this for a long time. You'd love to be able to get from this board, you know, and this might be just the initial meeting that we want to further discuss in another meeting. I'm just throwing all these suggestions out. But I'm getting that you'd love to have from this board tonight a solid confirmation that this is a good beginning, this is a good plan, it's much superior than what is approved. And will this board be willing to work with you towards a solution that creates an approved subdivision for you?
Yeah, that's why I'm here, yeah.
In accordance with what you're showing us here, which is a termination of the extent of the development just to the edge of the closest portion of the easement, correct?
Correct.
So can this board see the value and importance of reducing this enormous impact on that hillside to something like this? Or, you know, would you like to see fewer houses, you know, a stubbier roadway? You know, because that's one way out of it, you know, less intrusion into the hillside, less roadway distance, and maybe reduce the subdivision by two or three lots and call it a day. And you'll be on your way eventually, once you're done with it. You know, there'll be some beautiful homes built on the hillside, but not way up in the hillside that you're just going to, it's just, I can't even imagine how bad it's going to be. And I want everybody to know, I love flashbacks, but the first site visit as Woben's planner in 1985 was really to the extent of that existing removal of ledge. If you go up there now, Dave Perella was perched up precariously, dangerously, on a ledge outcropping in an excavator, trying to make some sense- on a ledge outcropping in an excavator, trying to make some sense of that hillside. That was in 1985.
Yeah, that's a while.
And this subdivision dates back to the very early part of the 70s, '71, '72. And it's been going on ever since, and it came to a dead halt at this location.
1985, I was eight years old.
Same.
And one of the counselors said, I went back, I flashed back last night of the council meeting to 85. He wasn't even born then, so.
To answer your question, you know, I, I mean, I like what I'm hearing so far, it's something you want to hear. I, my next move would be to engage one of my engineers to take this on and, and put together a couple of concepts, you know, that, and just see, you know, put the, you know, put some hard measurements and hard lot sizes and come up with a couple of things.
After, I'd like to suggest, then after he does that, and we get a better picture of this thing, and, you know, just try to really start making sense of it, that maybe you get the blessing to go into a definitive subdivision plan, an up-to-date one, with all the engineering standards being met, so that at the end of the day, we have a, we have an approved subdivision as a result, and hopefully everybody leaves here not big smiles on their faces, but satisfied that we did our work, the residents are happy with the work we did, or they're satisfied with the work we did, and the board's, you know, satisfied with the many years of involvement.
Yeah, right.
Multiple generations of this board have been involved in. And a lot of the ones that started with this are no longer with us. But rest their souls, but that's how long it's been.
Yeah, right.
David?
So you're gonna give us a couple of versions of what you think you'd like to do, one of which would be your idea that's there with nine units in a cluster format that had smaller square footage and smaller frontage.
Yep.
And John's idea where they would all meet the requirements of 12,000 square feet and 100 feet of frontage, but there'd be fewer units. Are those the two things we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about.
The third possibility here, or, these are all single-family homes.
Correct.
So you're gonna come up with two concepts, you're gonna have your engineers come up with two concepts?
Yeah, yeah, like, almost like what you see here, except it'll, I'm not gonna obviously get into drainage designs and all that until, you know, we pick something.
I mean, my biggest issue is, how do we get around the 12,000 square feet and 100 feet of frontage issue? If that is, you know, a concept that we can work with? Because I'm sure you want to maximize your effort, I mean, there's a lot of work that you've done. If you're gonna put the pipes in for eight units or seven units, you might want to, I mean, it just makes sense that you're looking to do it for nine units.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right? So
Ideally, yes.
That we can see what they look like.
Yeah, I think that's what we're looking at, is, you know, the nine and, and an alternative that's something slightly smaller that would be conforming lots. But, you know, obviously, Senco Builders' preference would be, you know, the nine units with variance for the lot size and frontage.
Karen?
I was thinking if the lots are non-conforming, we'd run into a similar situation that we had with Marcy Street, where they would have to go before the ZBA. Am I right? Remember how they didn't meet the frontage and it was a smaller lot size? I was just trying to think ahead, how, remember how John would speak to it better?
It depends what's, the ones that are approved now, where they all
They all conform.
They all conform.
Right, but I was trying to think ahead if, where he mentioned one of his concepts might be non-conforming lots, and I think that would involve, similar to what we did with Marcy Street?
It definitely would, it would be the exact same thing, yeah. I mean, I think we all, we all love this idea, and hopefully to move further, but we also have to cover ourselves here and make sure that, I mean, there's a plan already out there approved.
Right.
So this is a modification, one way or another. You know, I think we probably could call it a minor, just to kind of get it through, but it is a modification. But if you're gonna reduce the lot sizes, then you will end up probably having to go before the zoning, before the yeah, zoning board, and, and get variances on the lots. Because we've already proved regulation-sized lots with the frontage. I know myself, I don't like to approve anything without the frontage unless, you know, whatever. Oh, everybody.
We can look at the real particulars.
Everything.
Yeah, well, the lot size proposal, and, you know, what
We'd like to see it get done.
Yeah, what would be required permit-wise to
Yeah, I'd like to see if the applicant can give his versions of your best proposal. Hand sketches are fine. Identify square foot of lot, frontage, any variances from the existing zoning ones that you have to meet, such as grade for roadway, roadway width, sidewalk, anything you're looking for relief on to be identified with each proposal, if any. So I think as a board, I'm more than willing to take a look at this offline and give a recommendation through the director to the developer, what our, which way we're leaning, so he can fine-tune a hand sketch, you know, something that's a little more crude, and be more presentable when it comes down to look at, and then give some official feedback. So going multiple times to the well. I think this is very close, and I think it's just gonna take some modifications along the way between both the board and the applicant to get across the finish line. My suggestion to the board for the applicant.
Got one?
Yeah, so I think it's definitely, obviously, a better proposal that's being presented. And back to the question of whether it would be a new application or an amendment to an existing, whether it's minor or modification. I don't have an opinion either way either. However, I think during your process with, you know, your experts, the question is, what are you gonna run into if it's a minor or a modification? And is that process gonna be more cumbersome than a new application? I don't know the answer to that, but I'd hate to see you do all this work and down the line run into more problems than anticipated with minor versus major modifications, and, you know, what type of waivers you would require. So I think during that process, that's something to look at, or initially certainly, and make that decision. But it seems like you're leaning to it's more an amendment to this, which I'm not opposed to, but, you know, obviously, to make a smoother transition.
Thank you, Karen. David?
So in the concept of minor modification and major modification, is it just about whether or not we have to open up the public hearing again? Or is there some other thing that happens? When you say it's a major modification versus a minor modification?
Well, if I'm not, no, go ahead.
Typically, a minor modification is an engineering sniffle where they have to readjust a fire hydrant, a catch basin, or utility, something on that line, a foot or two from where it's proposed location, all right? Maybe move a sidewalk line a couple inches, that type of thing. This is a large modification, nothing but what we're talking about here, you eliminate half the roadway system. What I'm talking about is a large modification versus a new application. Not major and minor modifications.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, major modifications did require a public hearing.
I'm just remembering to that
That we've had it before.
Yeah, a few that were entrusted.
Some with John's, yeah.
We'd be dealing with a whole new plan. So it would supersede what was previously approved, so you would have to have a new public hearing. I don't think there's any harm in doing that. You have to create a new, fully engineered plan, and you'll have to meet muster. I warned you anyway about this.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
You know what you're facing.
I understand, yeah.
You're opening up the floodgates, and, but you're being shown support for this. I mean, you'd have to be reckless not to want to reduce the amount of impact that you have approval for.
Right.
You know, and I think everybody that would be involved with this, all the neighbors and everything else, can see the benefit of such a reduction in the impact of what you have approval for. Not that they could ever possibly do it or afford to do it, but, you know, here we have something that's, you know, a 50% reduction or more in the impact of that hillside. I think the numbers of houses, this board's gonna have to decide about that during a public hearing, after we listen to everybody.
Yeah, and like I said, I'll put a couple of concepts together. Like I said, in this concept, there hasn't really been any grades or anything taken into effect, so we'll look at it closely with a real concept, now that I know that you'll listen to it.
So I don't, I don't think there's any, we don't have to do anything on this right now.
No, no. Yeah, you just came with us with this proposal, you're protected with your approved plan in accordance with the statutory extension that was granted by legislature and Governor Healy. So you're protected for the next couple of years anyway. It gives you time to put new plans together and submit them for a public hearing, and we can go from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
You got the, I think you've received the input
I did.
Much better than you thought
I appreciate it.
From this board this evening.
Well, you might be the first person that's ever come to us and wanted a downgrade.
I know, you don't hear laughs too much, right? You don't hear laughs.
I don't remember anything. You guys, Dave?
You're always trying to squeeze us.
Nobody's ever, nobody's coming down.
Yeah, the other day I want to do something that makes sense, it will be nice and less impactful, and I mean, as much as I like coming and talking to you guys all the time, I
No, no, it's our
Maybe next time about something different.
It's our pleasure.
I don't want to say the word hi view anymore, you know?
I mean, just as an observation, the public would have to like this better.
Oh, yes.
Right? I mean, the neighbors were not too thrilled with the original.
I'm sure they weren't, yeah.
And we all know the electric company
Yeah.
Doesn't like anything.
Well, they'd probably be happier with, with no blasting underneath, you know, through the easement.
Yeah, no.
I mean, one thing to keep in mind, yeah, the least amount of waivers, as Jim pointed out earlier.
No, I understand.
The better.
Yeah.
And if you could possibly design something in accordance with our subdivision regs, and you aren't asking for any waivers
Yeah, I know, that's preferable.
Or standard deviation, standard design deviations, then you have an approvable plan now. I don't know if you can even design something like that.
I'm gonna take that on the, I'm gonna take that on the
But we're, at least, it looks like we're wide open for you to come back and show us what you come up with.
All right, I'm gonna get on it.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you so much, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Okay, up next, what is up next? The procedural rules governing the planning board. And last meeting, we got a copy of it given to us, and your homework assignments were to read it and see if you needed any changes made. And we have another one before us tonight, a draft of what it would look like. So any comments, questions, anything on this? Okay?
You want me to clean it up?
Is that the will of the board?
And then we'll adopt it?
Yes.
So everybody's satisfied with the word for word?
Yeah.
I think the time for objections has passed.
Yes.
It's a great suggestion.
Six-month rule is over. Okay, so that's all we'll do.
So we'll print those up, and everybody will get a copy, and they'll be your procedural rules.
Right.
To live by.
Um, well, I mean, we probably should take a formal vote, but we should probably take a formal vote on a clean copy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Beautiful.
Cleaning department updates.
The planning department update, just real quickly, we went through a bond procedure today. Woburn does have a AAA bond rating presently, and we're trying to maintain that. And there's a lot of activity going on in the city, both municipally with projects, grant-wise with projects, I can go into particulars with you on request. The economy, everybody has noticed commercially, especially with the biotech, has obviously slowed down, and it's been slowed down. It's not just affecting Woburn, it's affecting, you know, pretty much every major development in the state, you know? You know, it's not the country relative to biotech, just a few short years ago, everything was boom, boom, boom. You know, biotech, and, you know, it's like overbuilding the housing market, you know? You can only build so many houses and hope for the buyers to show up, you know? And that's what happened with the biotech. But we're working diligently to continue to strengthen and improve our local economy. You know, really searching out what economic development opportunities that are out there. I think everybody on the planning board drives around Woburn, probably north to southeast or west, at some point in your weekly drives around the city. And you see there's quite a bit of economic activity still continuing. The veil right now, you know, is quiet, because most of the residential development has occurred, and it's been successfully completed. But the build, the big building pads for commercial development within the veil are, still remain dormant. Those are ready-to-go sites, and they're approved for commercial development. Any future development that varies from the approved plans, they would be subject to a rapid review and approval going forward in accordance with zoning provisions. But insofar as the multifamily developments that are taking place, and, you know, there's a couple still going on up in the North Woburn area, one in particular, in the former New England residence property. That's pretty much nearing completion, but the bridge, you know, that has to be coordinated, the access of the new bridge and the access of the multifamily development, that has to all be in sync in order for occupancy to start taking place with that multifamily development. Other than that, there's no proposals at the moment for subdivisions that I know of coming into the city. Karen may want to chime in on that particular issue, but I haven't, you know, come across any, anybody proposing, you know, any sizable developments residentially speaking. The ADU that we passed on to the council, the ADU zoning matter, that's still being bandied about by the council. The state is still reviewing and revising guidelines, there's another Zoom meeting coming up. I've commented many times, it seems like revisions to the guidelines for the ADU statute amendment come out nearly on a weekly basis. And nobody knows what the end result will end up being in regard to whether or not ADUs are specific to single-family homes, or duplexes, or triplexes. I think that's still being debated at the state level. Pretty much that's about it, I could get into specifics if you wanted to talk further.
Okay, thank you, John.
Everybody happy?
Everybody's good. Everybody's good.
I like, I like seeing happy faces.
No, I'm sure you do. All right, we have, we have March 11th, 2025 minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Motion by Claudia to approve the minutes as submitted.
Agreed.
Seconded by Jim, all those in favor? Three, four, five, six, zero, Kevin Epstein. And I don't see any other business?
Being no other business, I would make a motion to adjourn at 8:20.
Motion by Claudia to adjourn at 8:20, seconded by Carolyn, all those in favor? Seven, zero carries, thank you. Seven, zero carries. Thank you.